Welcome to the final hearing of the Public Accountability Committee's inquiry into the integrity, efficacy and value for money of New South Wales Government grant programs. Before I commence, I'd like to acknowledge the Gadigal people, who are the traditional custodians of the land upon which the parliament sits, pay our collective respects to elders past, present and emerging. Today we'll be hearing from Mr Darren Murphy, the Chief Executive Officer, and Mr Dylan Bonan, the Senior Manager from Core Integrity. And before I commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website as soon as it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded to take responsibility for what they publish about today, and we remind witnesses that parliamentary privilege applies to what's said in the hearing today, but not what is said outside. Committee hearings are not intended to be a forum for people to make adverse reflections upon others, under the protection of parliamentary privilege, and in that regard, we'd appreciate people to stick to the issues rather than the personalities. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness, in accordance with the resolution of the House adopted in 2018. If either witness is unable to answer a question immediately and would want more time to respond or to refer to other documents, you're entitled to take a question on notice, in which case you have 21 days to provide that answer. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, please do so through the committee staff. And in terms of audibility for today's hearing, I'd just remind witnesses, if they can, to pull the microphones a little close and speak directly into those microphones. Finally, could I ask everybody to ensure their mobile phones are on silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our two witnesses. Core integrity, of course, was a key part of the government's response to concerns about fraud in a series of grant programs that commenced immediately after the bushfires and continued through the pandemic. Core integrity were brought on because of their recognized expertise by the state government, and we're grateful to have your attendance here today and your assistance with our committee's deliberations. I remind you that you're both appearing under summons, and I do draw your attention to paragraph 12b of the procedural fairness resolution of the House, which states that witnesses appearing under summons may be required to answer questions if the committee so decides, and failure to do so may constitute a contempt of parliament punishable under section 11 of the Parliamentary Evidence Act 1901.
Well, that was the end of your nice bit, was it?
It's here in writing, so it's entirely appropriate we get that out of the way. So with that...
Downhill from here, I think.
With that welcome, could I ask each of you, perhaps starting with you, Mr Murphy, to provide your name, your position, title, and then take either an oath or an affirmation?
Thank you, Mr Schubridge. Darren Murphy's my name, I'm the CEO of Core Integrity, and I would like to take an affirmation. Please say. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thanks, Mr Murphy. Mr Bonan?
My name is Dylan Bonan, I'm a Senior Manager with Core Integrity, I'll take the oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you both for your attendance today. Did either or both of you wish to make a brief opening statement?
I've got a brief one.
Thanks, Mr Murphy.
So, good morning, everybody. As we've covered, my name's Darren Murphy, I am the CEO of Core Integrity, and joining me today is Dylan Bonan, a Senior Manager employed by Core Integrity. May I first start by reiterating that Mr Bonan and I have both been summoned to appear here today in our capacity as representatives of Core Integrity, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the committee for extending the invitation to both Mr Bonan and I for the ability to assist this inquiry. In terms of Core Integrity, we're an advisory firm, and as you've outlined, Mr Chairman, we work with a range of clients across both corporate and government sectors, and in May of 2020, we were engaged by the Department of Customer Service to provide support to both DCS and Service New South Wales in respect to the Grant Administration Task Force. We continue providing that support via DCS through until February 2021, when that contract ended. Thank you.
I do not wish to make an opening statement.
Thanks very much. Mr Murphy, feel, either of you feel free to take questions as is best suited to your expertise. When were you first contacted by the New South Wales Government in order to provide the services you provide?
It was around early May 2020.
And do you remember, was that a contact from Service New South Wales, or was it a contact from another entity?
No, it was from DCS, Department of Customer Service.
And what was the nature of that initial request or contact?
Due to our existing relationship, they reached out and basically asked if we could come and provide some fraud subject matter expertise and some investigation support in relation to what they'd established at the time, which I know to be the Grant Administration Task Force.
You said a Grant Administration Task Force?
That's correct.
And who was, where was that task force located?
That was located inside Service New South Wales.
Then, what was the initial scope of your contract?
We had a five-day initial term. The initial premise was to come in and help the department, or use that term collectively, including Service New South Wales, to size and scope the potential fraud exposure in the grant programs, and to provide some expertise around how they might stand up some investigation response to those.
All right, so do you remember what your first day of work with the department was under that contract?
Oh, look, it was a bit of a slow start, to be honest, so as you'd appreciate, the first couple of days is things like contracting, onboarding, getting connected and attending meetings. It was quite frenetic the first few days in terms of attending meetings and understanding what was happening, but we were a little bit slow out of the gates, if that's what you're asking, in terms of trying to strike a blow, just through those logistical aspects.
Yeah, so your first five-day contract, when was it that you first sort of sat down and were able to sort of scope out the scale of the problems?
So our dates were, and let me just refer here, 12th of May to the 19th. By around the 13th or the 14th, we were being connected with people internally at Service New South Wales, and working with the data analytics team in there to be able to get access to data to help them profile it.
Yeah. There's a document that's been tendered earlier in these proceedings, which is, can you identify that document?
The chronology?
Yes. Who was the author of that document?
I believe it was initially created by Anthony Lane from Department of Customer Service.
And then what, if any, role did you have in relation to that document?
I had zero role.
Did anyone from Core Integrity have a role in that document?
Not to my knowledge.
No, I didn't have any involvement in that document.
Do you recall receiving it, though, at some point?
I think I've received it, but my understanding and recollection, this was created towards, I think, January or February of this year, due to the fact that Mr Lane was leaving the department.
So it was more capturing, as you understand it, that officer's understanding of the chronology of events?
I believe so.
If it assists at any point, feel free to refer to it, if the timeframe's...
Sure.
So, the initial five-day contract, the first two days of which are largely sort of getting in position, once you did, what did you discover in terms of the capacity within the government to identify fraud and the fraud prevention systems were in place?
That's a broad question, so I'll maybe give you some initial observations. So I think, as has been shared in previous hearings and as an acknowledged fact, we were brought in at a time when, I think, Service New South Wales had realized that they had potential fraud in the various grant programs that were running at the time. We were contracted by Department of Customer Service via their audit and governance and risk area to provide some extra capability, if you like. Our initial couple of days, we assessed obviously that this was an organization that had stood up as a strike force or a task force to respond, and obviously they're under considerable duress internally, if you like, in terms of mobilizing a response. Our specific engagement, to your point, in relation to the first five days, and it was then subsequently extended another 10, was really focused around two key things. It was working with their internal teams to understand the data sources that relate to the applications, so we could then provide some fraud and analytical reporting on that to size and scale, scope it up.
But in terms of the systems that were in place, being used by the department to identify fraud, what systems did they have in place at that point?
So I'm not aware of what intimate systems they had at the time.
Did you speak to Mr King at any point?
Our team did deal with Mr King, and I obviously had conversations with Mr King, yes.
Did you speak to him in that initial engagement period?
Yes, we did.
What was his role?
My understanding of his role was he was providing a sort of, what we now call a Level Two Manual Assessment Check of applications.
Yeah, can you describe what a Level Two Manual Assessment Check is?
So I'll use terminology based on how the program's evolved during the time we were there, but essentially, a member of the public would make an application via Service New South Wales, you would have a range of controls and assessments that would apply onto that application. Things that were identified as potentially fraudulent or suspicious would then go to a security review team, which I believe consisted of Mr King, and they would then review those applications and look for anomalies.
And what tools was he using to look for anomalies?
The only tool I'm aware of that he was using at the time was an Excel spreadsheet to manually review and look for anomalies.
What was, how was he performing that task with an Excel spreadsheet? It seems a fairly rudimentary way of identifying anomalies.
I couldn't comment on what he was doing day to day, but I agree it's a rudimentary way to do that.
Well, how would an Excel spreadsheet be useful in terms of finding anomalies in thousands of applications?
Well, I'm not an Excel expert, but from what my limited knowledge is, it's around looking for duplicate data and correlated application data that might be suspicious. So for example, seeing an applicant that might have multiple applications or common email addresses and other identifiable information.
And how were those potential applicants, potential fraudulent applications, how were they identified and added, been added into Mr King's spreadsheet, you know?
I don't have visibility to that, I'm unable to answer that question.
All right. You said before, matters had been referred escalated up to Mr King, or escalated up. How, what was your, your job was to get to understand what the systems were in place at the time, so I'm asking you what the systems were in place at the time to escalate things up to Mr King to put on his spreadsheet?
No, our initial job wasn't to look at the systems, our initial job was to look at the data and try and profile the potential fraud exposure.
So what data were you looking at?
Application data.
Was that Mr King's spreadsheet?
So it was a combination. Our initial engagement, as I said, was the first sort of five, and then it was 15 days in total, was to get access to application data that resided in Service New South Wales, so we could profile that data, run fraud typologies across it, and as a part of that, we were aware of Mr King's spreadsheet, and the team would work with him. In terms of the processes that he employed internally, I don't have any visibility to that.
Would it be an unfair description to describe a Level Two Manual Assessment, a check, using Excel spreadsheet as a rudimentary fraud control measure?
That would not be an unfair statement.
Would you have a description of it, a Level Two Manual Assessment Check?
Well, I think it depends on where an organization is at in its journey at the time, so I think that's important from a contextual perspective. So if you're asking me, is it suitable for a large financial institution to run fraud detection and look at things in a spreadsheet? Absolutely not.
Is it suitable for a state government handing out tens and tens of millions of dollars of grants?
As a long-term solution, no it's not.
Well, is it suitable as a medium-term solution? Is it fit for purpose?
It's not fit for purpose, but I think at the time in question, they were early in their journey of, you know, as we've heard from Mr Rees previously in his evidence, they were early in their journey of initiating payments as a paying organization, and by their own acknowledgement, they didn't have any of the systems and processes in place at that early stage.
All right.
I agree with your assessment that an Excel spreadsheet is not fit for purpose for that kind of function.
And in fact, was it part of your remit to try and work out what a superior method would be, what a better solution would be?
It wasn't initially. I mean, as I mentioned, our initial focus was to try and give the government some advice on the potential scale and size of the fraud, and we worked hard for a good 15 days to try and connect data sources and get access to that data, and provide advice back into their business around profiling that. That was the initial scope.
Would you want to take us through what those 15 days showed and what you did in order to fulfill that task?
Yeah, sure, so at a high level, and I can defer to Mr Bonan if he needs to add further context. So we were connected with the data insights and analytics team that resides within Service New South Wales. Our team worked closely with them to try and ask questions around what data exists related to applicants, and then through that process, we were building out some dashboards, if you like, visualized dashboards, where we were using our fraud experience to slice and dice the data and look for fraud typologies and anomalies that might indicate either actual or suspected fraud.
And do you remember which programs, which grants programs you were reviewing at the time?
Not off the top of my head, I mean, I might defer to you, Dylan.
We looked at two initially, which was the Bushfire 10K, I believe, and the COVID-19 10K, and then we also looked at the voluntary firefighter grants.
And that was in the initial 15 days, Mr Bonan?
Yes. And I think towards the end, we also looked at the Bushfire 50K, but I can't remember the exact timeline.
And what were the tools you were using to analyze the potential fraud exposure? I'm assuming it was more than a Level Two Manual Assessment Check?
Yeah, so we had a data analyst in our team, my understanding he was using Power BI.
Yes, that's correct, Power BI.
And what did that show in that initial contract period?
I might defer to...
Yep, no problem. So initially, when we got, we had a view to try and understand, obviously, as Mr Murphy's mentioned, the level of exposure and also rate that exposure by risk, just for some initial indicators. So we used Power BI to run through, to run the data through that we had been provided by Service New South Wales, to identify where fraud may exist in terms of high, medium or low risk.
Yeah, and what did that show during your initial 15-day contract?
In terms of the possible exposure?
Correct.
I'd have to have a look at one of the documents, sorry, if you'd just excuse me. I believe in terms of a dashboard that we presented initially, it exposed, sorry, it showed that there were fraud indicators for the Bushfire 10K, which equaled 64,260,000, and of that, of our initial assessment, 51 million of that had been unpaid and 120,900,000 had been paid. And within the COVID 10K grant, 106,843,795 dollars' worth of applications had fraud indicators present. Of that, 113,452,646 was unpaid, 238,200, sorry, 396,787 was unpaid.
All right, so very significant fraud indicators. For the Bushfire grant, it was showing fraud, applications were fraud indications in the order of 64 million dollars, and on the COVID initial indications, applications, something in order of 160, 106 million with fraud indicators, is that right?
Yes, so in our rudimentary first view of it, where we just tried to rate it by high, medium or low risk at that stage, that was what we found in the data.
And what does fraud indicators mean? Obviously, it's not proof of fraud, what does it actually mean?
So it's when there's things like duplicate data, so a duplicate bank account or a duplicate user ID or mobile number, things like that.
Once you'd done that initial analysis, who did you hand it to, or what happened to your analysis?
It's probably, I'll take that. So this was an iterative process as well, so I think it's just worthwhile to mention that in that early stage, as those numbers are large, the model continued to be refined as we learned more about the business. But eventually, to answer your question, we transitioned that capability and that responsibility back into the Service New South Wales team.
Did that happen in the first 15-day contract?
It happened by the end of May, early June, so around that time, and by that stage, we were also getting pulled into other things around leveraging our investigation capabilities and experience, and that was the transitional period.
So at the end of the 15-day contract, was your contract extended? Was it renewed? What happened?
Yeah, it was extended. So we had the first five days, another 10 days. During the end of May, early June, we, I guess, backed out of doing the data analytics in terms of profiling the fraud and handed that capability. So when we started, Service New South Wales didn't have the ability to profile that data, but we handed it back to them by, say, May or early June. During that period, we started transitioning into other investigative tasks and providing law enforcement engagement, investigation duties, helping resolve other things that were coming up from inbound inquiries, and then we were extended further into an RFQ.
Because your company has experience in fraud control and identifying a chain of evidence necessary to lead to a conviction, for example, in fraud control, is that right?
Yes.
Do you want to explain to us what your experience is in that regard?
Well, I'm an ex-New South Wales detective from the police. I've also worked in investigations for the better part of my 25-year career. We've done a number of large engagements for government agencies before, not necessarily around fraud, but coming in and looking at historical caseloads, investigation practices, the way that data is managed, the way you profile an investigation function, and we're called upon in those scenarios to stand up that process. And then a key part to your question around understanding evidence is to understand the data that's available and the processes and systems, so you can get access to that and pull it together in an evidentiary pack.
Yeah, and so it's putting in place systems to identify fraud, it's knowing what data to pull out, and then it's assisting a department and/or the police in pulling together a brief of evidence to be able to prove the fraud. Would they be the sort of three key elements that you do?
They are, with one slight nuance change. Early in our engagement, when we started transitioning into that sort of response bucket, if you like, of providing investigation support, we weren't involved in any fraud control framework and advisory piece around systems, so we definitely weren't involved in enhancing their front-end controls or what their fraud control framework would look like. We very much were at the end of the pipeline in terms of setting up response protocols.
But that front-end work became more a feature of your work as the contract developed, is that right?
No, can you explain what you mean by the front-end work?
Well, putting in place fraud controls, putting in place those protections, or was that never part of your remit?
That wasn't part of our role.
You were doing the data analysis, identifying the scale, working out how to find it, and then capturing the information and handing it over to prosecuting agencies?
Yeah, correct, that's right.
So having initially found indicators of fraud of 106 million dollars in the COVID response, 64 million dollars in the Bushfire response, how did your work progress after that?
So when we transitioned from May into June and handed off the, I guess, the analytics and profiling of the fraud back into the service business, our work was predominantly focused on two key things. So one was providing investigation support in relation to inbound police and financial institution inquiries, and I can come back to that. The second one, we were starting at ground zero from a DCS and a Service New South Wales perspective around building an investigation function. So a very large chunk of time and effort was spent by our team trying to understand and map all the various data sources that might be associated with a member of the public's application process, getting access to that data, so we could then analyze it from an investigation point of view, draw some insights, and eventually go through that chain to the investigation preparation.
So when, if we could turn our mind to the Bushfire response grants and the COVID response grants, there was, I know that you were advised that there was a very reasonable rush to get the money out to deal with an emergency situation, and that was the context in which the grant systems had been set up, is that right?
I'm aware of that, yes.
Yeah, but having established a rapid delivery of grants, there wasn't any mature system in place to deal with fraud or to assess potentially fraudulent applications?
Which time period are you talking about?
Well, particularly May.
So I think it's fair to say that when we came into the engagement, it was quite rudimentary, and there was not a level of maturity that would exist right now.
Yeah, and in terms of the investigation function, you said it was ground zero, you were the standing start in terms of investigating fraud, is that right?
That's correct. Service New South Wales didn't have a, what I call a protracted or complex investigation capability, and weren't able to understand, I guess, the complexities involved in how you get access to those data and systems to do an investigation.
Given your experience with other large and sophisticated clients, was this unusual in your experience to see, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars going out the door and having that very rudimentary fraud control measures in place?
So if you're asking me, based on my advice and in my narrow lane, yeah, it's less than ideal that you would launch programs without the requisite controls, of course.
But can you think of, what I'm asking you is, was it unusual in your experience? Obviously, it's less than ideal, but was it unusual in your experience that hundreds of millions of dollars have been allocated out through grant applications or some other delivery mechanism without having more than very rudimentary fraud controls? Was that unusual?
I found it unusual, yeah.
Well, in your experience, have you seen, have you seen anything like it in other parts of your work?
No, but to be fair, I think this is the first time I've been engaged by an organization that's probably changed its operating model from being, and this is my assessment, someone who receives money from members of the public, to now someone who initiates payments. So I think it's fair to say they were going through a transition, and this is not to defend them, it's just contextually relevant, whereas in my previous experience, and I've worked in large financial institutions, very, very different business model, very complicated and a lot more maturity, so...
Large corporates, insurance firms and the like, they're not handing out hundreds of millions of dollars unless they know it's going to the right place.
Well, they do their best to make sure it goes to the right place, yes.
But those kinds of controls weren't in place for the public money that was being delivered by Service New South Wales, at least at the commencement of your contract, is that fair to say?
That's my understanding, yeah.
When you raised the, when you identified the level of concern, what was the response from Service New South Wales?
Can you be more specific in terms of their response? Because, I mean, they had daily stand-up meetings and a full task force.
Were they, well, did they, when you came to them and said, "Look, we think there's applications which have fraud indicators in the form of, in the sum of 106 million dollars on the COVID response, and you put that data in front of them," what was their initial response?
So they were concerned, they had acknowledged that there was a concern here, and I think they took proactive steps to establish the grant task force back in early May prior to our engagement, and definitely by the time we arrived, they were in full swing in having, you know, daily stand-up meetings and, you know, many, many people involved in trying to get what I call a lasso around this issue, so, yeah, they were concerned.
But there was still money going out the door, wasn't there, at this time?
Yes, grants were still being funded. There was a period of time, I'm aware of, I can't give you the dates, where certain grant payments were put on hold whilst they tried to bolster controls. Part of that predates our engagement.
All right, but by the time you were there, money's still going out the door, and there weren't the fraud controls in place?
I might defer to Mr Bonan in terms of, because he was tactically involved in that.
I can't speak to the detail of how much payments were going out. I know that there were daily discussions, though, in terms of whether or not payments should be made, and there was being reviews, reviews of certain applications being done by members within or employees of Service New South Wales before payments were made.
There were thousands and thousands of payments being made, though, Mr Bonan, so how was Service New South Wales identifying the applications to review?
I can't speak to that, I don't have any knowledge of that.
Well, do you know if they had any software in place that would have assisted them to identify the applications to review?
I'm not sure. I know there was a process by which applications were flagged if certain criteria were met, and then that went through to the, what's now called the SRT, Security Review Team. I don't know how those controls worked or how they were implemented.
But part of your job was to work out what kind of measures and controls should be in place to identify fraud? That was part of your contract work, wasn't it?
So my role in terms of this was to look at the data, obtain data, and then do some initial fraud indicators about it. I wasn't involved in looking at controls.
Was that part of your work, Mr Murphy, to look at the controls?
As I mentioned, when we had our first briefing in terms of our engagement, it might have been listed on one of the bullet points, but very quickly, the focus of our work was working on understanding where the data was, helping the Service New South Wales team profile that data and present it back in-house, and then we shifted into investigation. There were other parties involved in fraud control framework and those kind of things.
But the primary tool that you were using to map the scale of fraud, was it the Power BI?
Initially, yeah, that's correct.
Do you want to talk us through how Power BI was being, is it called Power BI or Power BI?
Power BI.
Power BI.
Yeah.
Tell us what Power BI is, and tell us how you used it.
So it's a data visualization tool, very similar to Tableau, and I'm not a data analyst, but you ingest data and you present it in a visualized form. So for example, if I take an fraud and investigation view, you would look at pie charts, bar graphs, present data and try and correlate data and draw insights.
All right, and in terms of drawing insights, what insights do you draw?
So that first engagement that we did was, as Dylan, Mr Bonan outlined, it was trying to say, in this particular grant stream, this is applications that we identify as suspicious or not suspicious, that kind of insight.
So, Mr Bonan, you were the one who was using Power BI, is that right?
No, it was our data analyst, I just worked with him. I'm not a data analyst either.
But he was feeding you the outcomes?
Yes, he was feeding myself and Mr Murphy the outcomes.
All right, and what did they show, apart from the 106 and the 64?
Well, our initial view was to get an understanding of the potential exposure and then risk rate that, so that was the extent of the... So that was the extent of that initial work being done.
You then said you wanted to hand the data identification work back in house to Service New South Wales, is that right?
They they wanted to take it back in house.
All right, how did that work?
Uh, well, it was a matter of working up the dashboards that we had in Power BI, uh, to a requisite level. There was a number of milestones throughout that sort of May, early June period. And then I think it was around the thirtieth of May, we had a meeting where, um, the Service New South Wales team said they were now equipped with access to the data and understanding how we slice and dice the data and they could take it from there.
So you basically set up the Power BI analytical tools, got the system, you being Core Integrity, set up the Power BI analytical tools, got the system in place and then handed the keys over to Service New South Wales to run it, is that right?
That's, that's correct, just a couple of distinctions which are important. The data sits inside Service New South Wales, it's housed in the data analytics warehouse or team. They use Tableau for a range of purposes. We simply use Power BI on our side to do our own profiling of that data. My understanding when we handed it over to them is they decided to use Power, uh, sorry, Tableau going forward because that's their in-house solution. So they replicated our dashboards, if you like, in a Tableau environment.
Can I ask you how, when, by the time, when did you cease your work with, um, Service New South Wales? When did Core Integrity's contract end?
That was February two thousand and twenty one.
February of this year? So in the, in the lead up to February, what was your exit plan? What what was, how did, how did your relationship come to an end with Service New South Wales?
So if I go through the timeline, we we've talked about the May-June transition of the visualized reporting back into the business. We started working on investigation response protocols. We were reporting into DCS and that governance risk and performance area for that. So outside of Service New South Wales, we established the Strategic Investigations Unit, comprised of seven resources, um, from our team. We dealt with inbound police referrals and financial institution referrals in the initial stages. That was a huge focus of our work based on the volume and the lack of resources. And in addition to that, and in parallel, we had to map out the data sources and the systems to be able to support that investigation process. In around November, uh, our team was scaled back in terms of resourcing and I believe that was due to funding. Our initial contract was due to end on the thirty first of December. They extended it through to the end of February to support a transition plan, which I believe is linked back to that briefing paper, uh, and then we exited.
All right. This document, this chronology document, um, has on, uh, for July of twenty twenty, it's unfortunately not page numbered, but can you see July of twenty twenty? It's got network analysis and identify resolution software, do you see that?
I've got it, yep.
Yeah. So in July of twenty twenty, the, um, Service New South Wales chronology says, "Key to the successful identification of potential fraudulent grant applications is the ability to identify all associated grant application ties to a fraudulent one. That is other applications that share common characteristics, names, addresses, email addresses, phone numbers, bank account details, et cetera." Just stopping there, is that a fair summary of how you identify fraud?
Well, it it's one mechanism to support your investigation process.
If you've got a data heavy, um, program, that's, that's, they're the sort of the key things you look to in a data heavy program, is that right?
You look to use other tools that can expedite a manual process and eliminate human error, yeah.
Now, there were some notorious examples from the ten K bushfire fund. One was a series of applications from the same bikie outfit in Newcastle, where they all shared a common address, which was a large bikie compound. Um, and they all used common images, I think, of the same burnt shed that they'd scraped from Google. Do you remember examples like, would, sorry, would that be a classic example with a common address and a common image?
Yeah, they're they're common examples of where people attempting fraud use common addresses, email addresses, bank accounts, IDs.
Yeah, do you recall the concerns being raised about organized crime seeking to access these grants?
Yes, there were, there were police inbound referrals to that extent.
Yeah, can you give any details about how your work helped identify or evidence that kind of organized crime attack?
Well, uh, let's take a broader view. When we were moving into that investigation phase and established the SIU, the Strategic Investigation Unit, we had a level one team within Services of Wales that was doing application checking, a level two team that was known as the Security Review Team, they were doing the more enhanced assessments. And then they would refer suspicious applica- applications to our team for a ongoing investigation. As part of that process, we used that network analysis tool that we've referred to in this chronology. It was Power BI as the tool that we use. And that was one of the methods that enhanced our ability to review, assess and prioritize cases.
All right, and can you remember identifying those tags for that, um, Newcastle organized crime syndicate?
I might defer to Mr. Bonan.
I I believe that was off the back of an inbound police, um, inquiry that was made to, uh, Service New South Wales, which, uh, those came through to us in SIU.
And then what did the SIU team and yourself do once you got that inquiry?
I think, uh, at a general, uh, response, we worked with the police to get some of the information they had and then ran it through the data that we had available to us in terms of application data to see if there were any applications that had been submitted, uh, and if there were any other linked applications.
And did you find additional linked applications, Mr. Bonan?
That's correct, yes.
Do you, well, talk us through that, what did you actually find? And what was the common data points that assisted you in finding that?
Well, there were a number of data points that would be used, it depended obviously on the individual case. But we would use through using Power BI, um, as a, as our data analysis tool to identify applications which had common links to other applications. So for example, a name appearing on multiple applications, um, we could then use that to see that those applications were linked or a bank account number was used for multiple applications. And from that, we would get that data and do an analysis of it.
But in relation to the, this particular organized crime syndicate who clearly were targeting the grants application, can you remember, A, the scale of it or what the com- what the indicators were?
I'd have to take that question on notice.
But you'd also use a mapping tool to identify individuals who'd made multiple applications, is that right? That was one of the things?
That's correct, yes.
Can you give us an indication of what the scale of that problem was? Were there individuals making two applications or five applications or a hundred applications? What were you finding?
So, w- once again, just to take a step back, we got referrals from the, from inside Service New South Wales, from the SRT, uh, team as well as inbound police referrals. For the inbound police referrals, there were some instances where there were multiple applications being made. So, um, you know, ten, twelve, sometimes fifteen applications. For in, sorry, for, uh, SRT referrals, um, they came through to us and they ranged from maybe one or two applications through to, I think there were a couple where there might have even on initial review been two hundred applications, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and, um, and, and those were either identified by an external agency like police, um, or were being picked up through data analy- data analytics, is that right?
Uh, yes, so either police were coming to us with information and we would then run it through or through the fraud controls and systems that Service New South Wales had in place. It would be flagged by the SRT team and they would refer that to us.
It it seems incredible that a system would allow the same person to make two hundred applications. That must have struck you as, well, I'll say odd. But I'll ask you, how would, how would you describe your response when you saw that the system allowed someone to make, you know, upwards of two hundred applications for the same grant?
I think it does seem odd, yes, that's correct. It seems unusual that a system would allow that. I do know that, uh, I can't speak to the extent of it, but controls were put in place to prevent that happen, happening. I'm just not sure of when those controls were put in place.
I'll just hand over to Ms. Hughes Os.
Thank you very much for the, this is your time, um, this morning. I just want to go back a step. When did you first understand this initial scale of the fraud? Like you've given us some figures, and there was sixty four million dollars that you initially saw, um, in the bushfire grants and a hundred and six million dollars in fraud, you've had this in the COVID, um, in the COVID ten thousand dollar grants. When did you first, and when did you first start to understand the scale of the problem?
I I'm happy to answer that. So I think it was an acknowledged fact on the first day of our arrival. The reason why DCS reached out to us in the first place is that they'd already established that grant administration task force. Mr. King was using his spreadsheet and already identifying, you know, duplicate applications. So the day we arrived, it was already a known fact that there was issues. When we spent that, say, first fifteen days profiling the data, that's when people started to get a better sense of the scale.
Okay, so at the end of fifteen days, how did you under, did you have a sense of how much there was? When did you actually arrive with these figures?
So, a- as I outlined before, we transitioned that back into the service team. Their job was to keep looking at the data, keep updating those dashboards and then obviously move on to reporting those figures to elsewhere like Treasury. So we, unfortunately, I can't give you the answer, we backed out of it on the, around the thirtieth of May.
Sorry, when you say you, oh, right, okay, I understand.
Yeah.
So you, you said earlier that you referred to, like, this was obviously the first time that you had been engaged in something like, um, from this perspective. But it's certainly not the first time that the New South Wales government has ever given an emergency, um, grant. Did any of the Service New South Wales staff, did any of the Department of Customs and Service staff, did they ever refer to previous protocols that they had in place to prevent fraud? Did they ever refer to their previous experience?
I I I can't answer that question. As in I wasn't around, so I don't know what they did or didn't do.
But I think the question was, while you, while you were engaged with them, did they say, hey, here's our prior experience for fraud, here's our fraud team?
No.
They they didn't appear to have any of that experience in place?
No, they did not.
That's very helpful, thank you. Can you, so, and I just wanted to come to that point that you made about the involvement of organized crime. So just to be clear, that means that the, that it was only identified after the police referred it to you? Is that correct? It wasn't actually identified through the Service New South Wales or through your Department of Customs and Service?
No, that's not correct, there's probably both wa- both methods of detection. So, um, as Mr. Bonan outlined, you had the Service New South Wales teams doing, you know, manual and business verification checks around eligibility, escalating suspicious applications to their level two team before it would then reach our, um, Strategic Investigations Unit. Simultaneously, we had financial institutions from around the place and law enforcement making inbound referrals where they'd arrested an individual or had intelligence, um, that people were perpetrating fraud.
Okay, right, so it was actually working together, it wasn't just that they notified you that that contributed to start the investigation?
They run in parallel, they can be, you know, Darren Murphy commits fraud over here and it's identified internally versus the police arrest Darren Murphy and then ring in and say, can you give us some information?
So can you tell me how easy was it then? I understand that the inbound information from the police and the financial institutions, how easy was it for you to then provide that externally? So to then say, well, to the police, this is, this is the information that we've received and now we'd like to ask an option?
Sorry, and what was the question, how easy was it?
Yeah, was that, was that a, an easy process for you to do?
No, it was a complicated process and it was quite protracted. I I think it took us a good five months or so of heavy lifting internally to, um, get the business being Service New South Wales to understand the importance of identifying data sources that are related to applications and different, you know, platforms and, um, software and collating that data in a usable format, not only for the investigation process, but particularly to build an evidence pack and then refer it out to police. That was a very, very arduous task, it took five or six months.
You you spoke earlier of starting from ground zero on that, there was literally no capacity there initially.
Well, yeah, no, no capacity, but also no capability. And to my earlier point, I don't think they'd been in a position where they'd have to do that work before.
You know, essentially, it's a question that the police like the material presented in a particular way so they can move it forward quickly. If you don't present it in that way, essentially it gets chucked, chucked in a bottom drawer and may never see the light of day again.
So without speaking disparately of the police, because they're very helpful, um, they do like it given to them in a usable format, that's a one hundred percent. I mean, particularly from a criminal prosecution perspective, you need to present a proper brief of evidence. So if I can use an example to illustrate my point, things such as confirming that, uh, when the applicant makes the application, that he or she is the person in question. So there's things around proof of identity, then my account ID. There's also other data that exists, say, in Amazon Web Services, uh, around system data, so IP address information. So trying to map that process was a big, was a big task. Trying to get the business to understand that they're the kind of data fields and data sources you need to prove the providence or otherwise of an application and then obviously collating it for criminal prosecution.
That that's for instance why banks have special units to, to present the data to the, to the cops in a particular way. Because if they go with a set of bank statements to the cops, again, the cops will say, this is all too hard, we're not experienced in this stuff. And again, it gets thrown in the bottom drawer, that's, that's.
In my experience, you're, you're correct in your statement. And I used to run a large investigation team at a large bank and, uh, we had staff dedicated purely to law enforcement liaison and criminal prosecution briefs.
Plus, you need to present the evidence in an admissible form. You've got to be able to prove where the data comes from, prove the links between the data and an individual. And then that's quite a task.
Yeah, I mean, the thing with investigations, as you guys would probably know, is that everyone wants them done quickly, as long as it doesn't compromise quality. But in today's world, particularly with online applications and everything being electronic, it is quite an arduous task. So it's, it's a task in itself, never mind you're building from ground zero, the capability in the first place.
Even with a mature system, it's resource intensive?
Yeah, so i- in a financial institution perspective, they have large teams doing hundreds of investigations every single year and and are fully utilized in their capacity. And they're mature organizations.
Ms. Hughes Os?
Thanks very much. Um, I just wanted to ask one final question to round this, that there was a general lack of resources and, um, to pray or what you would do. Can you just explain a little more about that?
So when I said lack of resources, I was, I was mainly referring to our initial team, our, uh, Strategic Investigations Unit. It only comprised seven individuals. Mr. Bonan was the investigation manager that had two investigators working with him, including, uh, what we call the triage and assessment analyst. The other roles were, uh, the team leader, a law enforcement liaison person and the data analyst, so seven in total. And back to my previous experience, you know, uh, responses like this require more investigation, uh, capacity. That was called out repeatedly, but yes, we were limited in our, um, resourcing and we had, um, you know, competing priorities such as the inbound police referrals and the quantum of referrals internally.
So in your experience, you've just talked about how you're previously worked as a detective, you've worked in a similar kind of role in a bank, uh, collating this kind of information and passing along to, um, police. How many figures do you think in your experience would have been required to actually do the investigations properly?
It's a difficult question to answer precisely. I'm very much data focused in terms of building dashboards that look at things such as case cycle times, number of investigations per investigator, all those kind of things. So you actually need that intel to be able to answer your question accurately. But if I can use a non-identifiable example, a bank may have thirty dedicated investigators in a team crunching out three or four hundred investigations a year of complex internal fraud and bribery and corruption. And if we go back to, we had seven people initially, we were, we were calling out initially, we needed more resourcing, but funding was an issue, uh, and then our team was scaled back in November. So we had some serious challenges around resourcing.
Sorry, you said thirty investigators would be doing how many cases a year?
Uh, well, this is just sort of, you know, average data, yeah, sure. You know, getting three to four hundred cases out the door per annum, yeah, depending on the maturity of the business.
And how many cases were your seven investigators, was your team of seven responsible for the fraud?
I might defer to Mr. Bonan, who's got some of those details.
No problem. So, uh, we had, sorry, thirty one cases that we dealt with. I believe of those thirty one cases, thirty were in terms of inbound, um, inbound police referrals. One was an outbound referral. Those were the ones that we were wo- working on. I believe at the time that we ended our engagement, we had in total, I I think it was three hundred and forty seven or three hundred and forty six cases that had been referred to SIU.
But that, that was out of thousands of potential fraud cases? They were just the ones you were resourced, you were work, you had actually been directly referred to? That was only a subset, wasn't it?
Yes, a- and I should say that, that cases involve multiple applications.
And 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 indeed, the limited resources was part of the reasons why there was a limited number of cases in your, in your inbox?
Well, I think it was through the value chain, right? There was pressure on resourcing across the Service New South Wales business, which they've recognized and they've continued to invest in. So that's, you know, the front end manual sort of assessment, the SRT, which has got a different name now and they continue to add resourcing and the same with our team until its, um, conclusion. Resourcing was a constant challenge.
But throughout this process, more and more files have been identified as potentially fraudulent, but your resources were being wound down. That seems an all, that, that, that's. That, that seems an, that, that, that's a very peculiar way of dealing with fraud, isn't it?
Uh, it's not ideal. Yeah, that's right. And, and we did call out that we needed more resourcing, uh, absolutely.
And what did Service New South Wales say?
Well, to be fair, our conversations were with DCS, who were the contracting party and would manage us, it was up to them to have internal conversations, I'm not privy to those, but suffice to say, no additional resourcing or funding was forthcoming.
Yep. Mr Graham?
Great, thank you Chair. I just want to return to that point you were making about, uh, a comparable situation, those bank teams that are, um, dealing with them, perhaps thirty people in a team like that. The other difference with those teams though would be the experience or the, uh, specific uh, capacity of those teams. Would that be a fair comment? Often they would have, people perhaps with your experience, perhaps investigatory, perhaps ex-police, uh, in those teams, is that one of the differences that you saw as you went into this, uh, organisation? Organisation that was starting to deal with this challenge?
Yeah, that's a very fair statement. If you've got the, um, experience of those people, it can make your ability to be more efficient, um, uh, there as well. Um, I think also if we use a-
These banks have been building these teams up for decades.
Correct, and I was going to say that, that if you look at the value chain in a bank, they have enterprise-wide fraud detection systems running analytics automatically over millions and trillions of dollars of data, right? You've got, um, other assessment teams in the hundreds, if not thousands of people, that are doing alerts on a daily basis across AMLs, sanctions, counter-terrorism findings, internal fraud, before it gets to the protracted investigation team-
Correct.
-that I would lead. Um, so very mature businesses, huge investments in technology, and then when you get to the point E M, which is the protracted investigations, you've got a team of suitably experienced people with the right systems and tools to do the job.
And I thought you were making a strong point, that, look, really this organisation was coping for the first time with handing out money on this scale, but none of those systems, none of those teams were really in place when you first turned up to assess this, that you would comparably see in those-
Yeah, that's right, but that's also-
-institutions.
That's correct, but I think it's also an acknowledged fact by Service New South Wales. I mean, they had a lot of people working very hard-
Yes.
-to try and build these things.
If you, if you look at the bank example, you can see, uh, examples time and time again of, say, employees who are committing frauds, where those frauds have been going on for months, if not years. That's right, isn't it?
That, that is correct.
At least in terms of my experience.
The global average is normally around two years, depending on the maturity of the business.
So e- even with their level of sophistication and their level of maturity, um, tellers get away with lengthy, uh, periods of criminality.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, when it comes to risk management, uh, not to give a lesson on it, you know, we undertake a business, we've, we recognise there's risk in that process, we assess that risk, we then determine the effectiveness of controls and deploy controls, and maybe accept some residual risk, uh, in that scenario.
Maybe, it is accept.
That's right.
That it is a, a balance of actually operating the business-
Yeah.
-as against to, uh, adopting a risk profile involved.
Yeah, and, and the example I normally use with clients, if we're doing this kind of work, is you've got to determine how tight you wind that dial.
Yeah.
Do you tie, do you turn it so tight that you eliminate everything, but you also grind the business to a whole? Or do you turn it the other way, where it's very loose and it's a free-for-all?
I just want to turn to some of the organisations you're dealing with, because you're dealing with a range of different parts of, um, uh, government and externally. Um, can you give us some sense of, uh, you're dealing with the Department of Customer Service, also Service New South Wales, um, how concerned were they relatively as the scale of this fraud, uh, became clear?
They were very concerned.
Yeah.
They, they were taking it seriously.
And both, yeah, in your view, you were comfortable both of those, the Department and the, and Service New South Wales were taking it, um, seriously at that point?
Yes, that's correct.
And did you encounter any resistance from either of those organisations as you sought to raise these issues?
So, so no resistance, uh, but I think it's fair to say when you're an external company coming in to do work, there will always be pockets of resistance from the rank and file. Um, that's natural, we're outsiders, we're coming in to tell them how to do things. Um, so, you know, apart from just general operational friction that might exist in a high-pressure environment, there was no pushback from a sort of a leadership or an ownership perspective around not taking this issue seriously?
You're also dealing with the New South Wales Police. How concerned were they about the scale of this fraud as it became clear that it was mounting?
Well, interesting, uh, they were very concerned out in the regions, um, less so initially at the State Crime Command, um, but yeah, they were concerned, they were arresting people and coming across people in the streets that, um, they had evidence of that were defrauding the government and the grant programmes, um, and they were concerned at the, I guess, lack of, uh, capability of the government in dispensing the funds initially.
And you've talked about the, uh, fact that changing that culture, particularly the focus on data was quite arduous, that was your word, uh, over the course of five months. Why was it arduous? What made it hard? What challenge were you dealing with in the organisation?
So my assessment of that is, is a number of things. So first and foremost is you've got people working in a high-pressure environment, you know, in a time of crisis. Second of all, uh, to your earlier point, potentially not the right levels of capability where needed in certain parts of the business, and then that complete and utter sort of absence of capability and knowledge around this is the kind of data you need, this is how you need to access it, and these are the processes involved, and they are very laborious to be able to mount a successful referral to the police and a successful prosecution. So there was a, a lot of, um, understa- understatement around that.
Yeah, understood. You talked about, uh, both the inbound referrals from police and the outbound referrals from Service New South Wales. Do you recall at the end, towards the end of your, uh, tenure, the end of your, uh, contract as it finally concluded, a discussion about only dealing with inbound police inquiries? That is not really, uh, dealing with or triaging out in some way any of the outbound referrals?
So if you're referring to like the options paper that they put together, for example, which then landed on the model they went with, we weren't consulted or engaged in the development of that. Um, we were asked our views on what they should do moving forward, and without sounding self-serving, uh, my advice was you need to throw more money and more resources at this problem. You don't have enough.
Yeah, given what you'd seen, would you have been concerned, were you concerned about, uh, one of those options being really only dealing with inbound police referrals?
So I'm a bit of a purist on this, a- and, and maybe others won't agree with me, but yes, I, there's two aspects of this that I don't think have had enough coverage as well. You might have inbound referrals and what they call the P1 and P2s, you've also got the P3 and P4s, but there's also a, a large subsection of applications where people have attempted fraud, okay? And that's still a criminal offence and requires investigation.
But, but the, the basic, um, triaging was that unsuccessful attempted, attempts at fraud were not being investigated?
That's correct, that's my understanding, unless you've got a different view.
Uh, unless they came as part of police inbound referrals, I don't believe that they were.
So there are potentially thousands of people who tried to cheat the system, um, who haven't been successful, but have walked off scot-free. That's, that's the situation, isn't it?
That, that would be a reasonable statement.
And can I, well, can I just ask the, the question in a more open way, the same question, um, which is, what were the risks of really just responding to police inbound, uh, inquiries? What risks, given the work you saw, what were the risks of, uh, taking just that very limited view and really saying, look, we're not interested in seeing potential other risks elsewhere?
Well, it's a good question with a complicated answer. So the risk is you've got people that have defrauded the government, uh, that might potentially get away with that. Um, you're waiting on police to identify it, that's not their role. I mean, sure, they have a role to play, um, but as a government entity, you own the risk, you're issuing the payment, so you've got an obligation to, to take action in relation to that, so.
Yeah. And, uh, yeah, in your experience, that'd be quite an unusual way for an organisation to deal with this.
Yeah, in my experience, it's un, it's unusual.
And I might, uh, do you want to jump in?
Just on that point, yeah.
To then conclude, but yeah.
One of the problems with not tracking down attempted fraud and seeking to prosecute attempted fraud is that, um, that there's no deterrence factor there, is there?
Yeah, it gives rise to, um, the perception that there's either no controls or no appetite.
And, and then that, that's an environment within which it almost encourages fraudulent applications if people see that there's, that there's minimal risk, um, in ma- in making a fraudulent application.
Yeah, I mean, y- you need a balanced approach in all of this when it comes to risk and obviously investigating crime, but yes, um, strong action on investigating both confirmed fraud and suspected fraud i- is a good deterrent.
Yeah. The Service New-
Every bank card, for instance, or every ATM rip-off that goes on for, by the banks, don't end up in a referral to the cops, do they?
Uh, not necessarily, but that doesn't mean that they don't look into it.
Well, let me put it this way, if I report that my, my card has been skimmed, as it has, um, the bank within twenty-four hours will stick the money back in the account. You're not suggesting that that's being referred off to the cops, are you?
Oh, I, I, I wouldn't have a view on what they're doing in those teams, but no, I'm not suggesting that either.
Well, could I, do you mind, this might be a useful time, I'll just show you this document, which is the, um, the document provided from the government in answers to questions on notice about their, um, the Strategic Investigations Unit's priority matrix.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if this table is familiar to you, Mr Murphy?
It is.
Yep. Um, basically what it says here as I read it, you've got a weightings of either twenty, ten or one, twenty being a higher wa- obviously a significantly higher rating, and, and going down to a very low rate. Is that, is that what this table shows?
It's a weighting as to the answer of the question, so a relative weighting.
Yeah, so, um, and basically it says that if, if the amount, if the amount of fraud is greater than a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and there's a potential for a high level of media interest with negative reporting, or the victim or the person, person of interest is of note, and there's extreme financial loss, um, that, um, that it gets a high rating and gets investigated. But if it's between naught and fifty thousand dollars and there's little on, or no potential media interest, it gets a very low rating and is not investigated. Is that what that shows?
I would, I would call that a distinction. When, when we develop this, it doesn't mean that there's no action, what it is, and I, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this, because I'm aware of the questions that have come up previously in relation to this, and I think, hopefully this gives a, a bit of extra flavour as to the intent and efficacy of a prioritisation matrix. So it's common practice in investigation circles and running teams to build a priority matrix. The intent of the matrix is to assign the resources to the high-risk cases, because we all acknowledge that you've got a finite number of resources. It's intended to protect customers, stakeholders, the government, it's not designed to minimise or, 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 or get rid of things. So for example, um, and I'll use an example, let's say you've got a fraudulent application by someone who's using some bogus details, in that scenario, they may not be impacting a real customer of New South Wales, so therefore it might have a lower rating, because Darren Murphy, the real customer, hasn't been impacted, doesn't mean we don't investigate it, but we've got many competing priorities, many, many, um, you know, hundreds of cases to look at, and you have to assign your finite resources on the areas that matter the most.
But is it usual to put the level of media interest as one of the criteria for fraud investigation? That's almost, that's almost reputational protection rather than financial protection?
If you take a negative lens, sure, but it's also around, um, doing the right thing as well and giving attention to things that need it, okay? So for an example, we, we experience customers that might have been impacted in the volunteer firefighter, um, payments, okay? So legitimate firefighters that have been, had their identity copied or taken, and then had a fraudulent application made. They've gone to the press, they're a real customer that's impacted. So the expectation in that scenario is that you are going to assign the resources and the priority to that to help that customer out and to resolve that issue. That's the intent of the prioritisation matrix.
Just, just as a bank, if it had, had a pensioner who appeared on one of the programmes at seven or seven-thirty at night, would become a high priority in terms of the bank, uh, pursuing, because-
That's right.
It's newsworthy.
Yep.
But in terms of protecting the public finances of New South Wales, how does media interest reflect, um, the need for resourcing? That, that doesn't reflect the scale of the fraud?
So, so firstly, there's a number of inputs on the prioritisation matrix that when taken together, assign at the rating, not one is more dominant than the other, okay? They're taken together, the person doing the assessment would answer all these questions, it would assign a weighting, and then we would agree on the P rating, okay? So it's not just one. Now, back to your question around media interest, if you've got Dan Proudman making inquiries and stirring up noise, and he's also talking to the police, the police are targeting people, those factors together mean that you've got a high-risk case that you need to assign resources to, to get to the bottom of.
But here, one of the high-risk, identified at the bottom of the first column, a high-risk matter is there's been a GIPR application or a formal complaint or a ministerial.
Yeah.
And that's not about risk, other than reputational risk.
But it's about resourcing as well, Mr Shubridge. So we, we have finite resources, and if we get a GIPR request come in, and there is deadlines around that with the fin-, so I go back to taking a holistic view, you are trying to deploy your resources in the most efficient manner on the highest-risk cases. If there's an inbound GIPR, and we've only got two investigators with capacity, and we've got a deadline, well, where do we put the resources?
And it all comes back to the under-resourcing of the investigation unit, doesn't it?
Not necessarily, I mean, any investigation team of any note and any scale should be running some kind or version of a prioritisation matrix.
But with two, two actual fraud investigators in the team, you have a pretty brutal triage.
I wouldn't call it, I wouldn't call it brutal, it was realistic, the problem is the cases back up.
Mr Graham?
Um, I might, uh, return just to those examples, that was the, um, other thing I wanted to do, was just return to those couple of examples that we talked through and just follow up on some detail there, if this is a good time to do that.
It is.
Um, firstly, in relation to the, um, uh, outlaw motorcycle gang incident, this was largely in Lake Macquarie, is that, um, that's the, we're referring to the same?
I think there was a number of different groups that were targeting these schemes across the Hunter and upper North Coast.
Yeah, so what other areas were involved? The initial re- police referrals were from Lake Macquarie, is that correct?
Uh, so Lake Macquarie, Hunter Valley?
Yep.
And a little bit further up north.
When you say the North Coast, where are you referring to?
Uh, do you have detail of that?
Um, no, I'd have to take that on notice.
Yep, and, uh, we referred to, um, in those instances, the, one of the things that triggered concern was the same address, uh, or addresses being used, in one instance a clubhouse, uh, or the same images being used on a number of occasions. Um, do you recall how many times, uh, the same image was used, or how many times the same address was used?
So, I, I don't have that detail, I'll defer.
No, I don't have that detail either.
Perhaps on notice, on, in relation to that?
It's probably better directed at Service New South Wales, when they have that data. And the reason I say that is-
I'll, I'll happily direct that to Service New South Wales.
When we completed our engagement, we lost access to all those records.
Understood, yeah, I think, I think that's good guidance to the committee. Uh, in relation to the, um, instance you talked about, which was not an inbound police referral, but had come out of the Service New South Wales team, where there were two hundred applications in relation to the one individual, if I heard you, um, uh, correctly, um, uh, that was an extreme example, some controls were put in place. Uh, what was the nature of those controls that were then put in place?
I, I can't speak to that detail, I'm not sure of that, that was something done in-house by Service New South, New South Wales.
Yep, and it would have, uh, made the sensible intervention, can you tell us, it obviously would have made the sensible intervention to stop two hundred applications from one person, but, uh, did it still stop multiple applications? Are you able to tell us that?
Uh, I can't speak to that detail, sorry.
If I could just ask a couple, Mr Chair, thanks very much.
You have been pushing in too much.
Well, I know indeed, so I know my place.
Like that.
But, um, thank you, Mr Chair. Um, just interested, you were talking about turning the dial before, now, we've got to put this in context in terms of what the programmes were intended to help, as you were talking about, you know, bushfire victims, we were talking about, um, fireys who were volunteer firefighters and those programmes supporting them, we were talking about businesses that were being, um, closed down due to COVID restrictions that were in place at the time. So there was an imperative for this to, to all go out the door relatively quickly to be able to support people. Um, in terms of those options, and I think there were questions from the Chair earlier about the pausing of payments, I take it that this sort of need was taken into account as well, as that, uh, task force was meeting every day to determine whether payments were paused or not, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. There was a lot of focus in those daily stand-ups around the people being impacted by those That is absolutely correct. There was a lot of focus in those daily stand-ups around the people being impacted by those payments being held up. Absolutely.
And you were talking as well about this was a um, I I think you used the term turn the dial. Effectively, you could get to a position where you put every fraud control in place possible, but that meant that money didn't go out the door to the people who needed it. Or you could have a looser um arrangement. So were there other initiatives that were taken in terms of turning the dial to increase fraud protection but to also to continue to allow money to get out the door to the people who needed it?
I- in relation to the grant programmes?
Yes.
Well, so my perspective on that from our involvement from May onwards was there was a dedicated focus on the control environment at that point. They'd recognised prior to that when they established the programmes, it was a low control environment and money went out the door uh for those reasons. Um, there was a huge focus by Services of Wales to be looking at controls and every single day there was different conversations around deploying new controls in the latest update or of an application process or in a backend system. So there was a huge focus on the deployment of controls and the impact to customers.
So so were there other controls that were put in place during that period?
There would have been, just don't ask me the detail.
Okay, that wasn't your in your remit effectively at the time. Um, also, just wanting to ask in terms of the um in terms of the transition, so I think you uh said originally that this is effectively an organisation in Service New South Wales that was used to effectively being the receiver of funds and due to this period was stood up as um the transmitter of funds, effectively getting those grants out. Um, what sort of experience did they have in the past? Did they share with you at all in terms of um of actually distributing grants previously? Was there any experience there?
Uh, I'm not aware of it.
Okay. It was just your observation in a sense as to what the organisation was doing in the new uh remit of the organisation because of effectively the circumstances it found itself in?
Uh, my observation, but also, you know, I think it was an acknowledged fact that they were in that transition phase from being, you know, let's go from the old customer service of dealing with customers coming in and paying for things versus we're now a remitter of money on behalf of the government.
And in terms of the money that you identified, both the sixty-four million, I think it was, in terms of the bushfires and the hundred and six million with the COVID um originally, do you know what sort of the final figures ended up being in terms of um how much fraud was actually prevented in the end or not?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this might be a useful time to go back to that table, Mr Murphy, Mr Bone.
Which one, the prioritising or the chronology?
The colourful one, yeah, the colourful chronology.
Yeah.
Um, so going back to that same um entry, the entry reads on um core integrity identified early in their engagement that Service New South Wales' ability to undertake this type of analysis was limited if non-existent. That's the data analysis.
Yep.
Um, some attempts had been made in a rudimentary way to perform this type of analysis by Richard King in spreadsheets using data extracts from Salesforce. Um, that that's a, that is an accurate description, isn't it, of what was going on? Poor old Mr King was sitting there with a with an Excel spreadsheet trying to draw correlations.
That that's an accurate reflection.
Yeah. Do you remember, um, I mean, Mr King in some ways is the hero of the hour, isn't he? He was the the one person in Service New South Wales defending public finances.
I I don't know if I'd categorise him as the hero of the hour. I appreciate the sentiment. I mean, there was a lot of people working on this that probably equally deserve um credit for their efforts. I think the better point is, you know, they were relying on a spreadsheet. That's the salient point.
Yeah, and it was Mr King's spreadsheet, one officer.
Uh, I believe so. I don't know who else might have been using that spreadsheet.
Yeah. I mean, it's hard to imagine a less suitable fraud control measure if you've got hundreds and hundreds of millions going out the door than Mr King with his spreadsheet, as as capable and competent as Mr King no doubt was, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, it should be better than that, sure.
Yeah, well, it's almost hard to imagine a worse one, isn't it?
What, none? None would be worse. But yes, it's not ideal.
Yeah. Um, the the report then says Core Integrity developed their own network association tool using Power BI, which they offered to provide Service New South Wales to use to assist with case referrals. That that's accurate, isn't it? That's the system you set up?
Yeah, so just for a bit of clarity on that, so we're all on the same page. We were using Power BI that was accessing data out of Tableau that was housed in Services of New South Wales and we were using it with a plugin to look at correlated IDs.
Yep. And and the data was being extracted from Salesforce.
I I believe so.
I I believe that it was extracted from another number of systems. I can't speak to those systems in details and then it would be housed in the Service New South Wales data warehouse.
Um, you you've, th- this report goes on, um that um Service New South Wales rejected the offer to use Power BI as it was felt that it could not be supported internally and additional licences would be required. Is that a fair summary of your understanding about why your offer for Power BI was rejected?
It it's a high exact summary of the situation. Um, it there was, it's a little bit more nuanced and complicated.
Afraid to tell, Mr Murphy.
So uh our team was using Power BI with a certain application plugged in that enabled the team to look at those correlated data sets. So for example, you know, an application made out of a Liverpool Liverpool strip mall, there might be twelve addresses all saying the same address, draw of applications. Okay, um, the team, Dylan and the team would receive referrals internally from Services of Wales. They might get uh five applications, run it through Power BI and then find another twenty that were correlated. So there was definitely utility in that um application. Uh, we made it known to DCS and they they did a lot of heavy work to try and get it um into Services of Wales, but ultimately they didn't adopt it. I've seen Mr Reese's previous statements um in relation to not wanting to accept uh the recommendation. But there was considerable back and forth by Services of Wales for a period of many months to work with uh Mr Bone and the team uh to try and establish their own network analysis tool.
Um, just to finish through with the Service New South Wales chronology, um, it says, however, multiple assurances were made that a network association tool would be built in Tableau, the preferred dat- data visualisation tool of Service New South Wales prior to Service New South Wales embarking on the Fraud Control Framework initiative. To this date, and this is this is as at February,
Yep.
um, the Tableau version of this tool has never been built and funding was not approved. At the time you exited in February, that's an accurate summary?
That's an accurate summary.
So Service New South Wales didn't take on board your data analytics tool and didn't have their own stacked up, ready to go? Is that what happened in February?
That's correct.
So then, when you left, who was there? What was the ability to do fraud visualisation when you left in February?
Uh, look, it's a good question. I can't answer because I'm not there, obviously. Um, but on this particular point, I think just to be really clear, I mean, my assessment and uh advice, that there should have been no reason, to be honest, why this, they couldn't have adopted something like this. Um, they saw the value, the internal teams. Um, I I'm led to believe it was a funding issue. It's not an expensive product, so.
So so to be clear, at the time you left in February, you you take your Power BI tool because it hasn't been adopted by Service New South Wales. They don't have the Tableau system stacked up. There's literally no competent or capable data visualisation ability in Service New South Wales in February of this year, you know, more than seven months after you first identified the scale of the problem.
To my knowledge, that's correct.
Um, can you recall, you know, um leaving an organisation after identifying the scale of such a problem and leaving an organisation where they 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 haven't addressed this kind of fraud issue like this before?
Oh, look, I think it doesn't matter what I've seen elsewhere. I think the re- the reality is for this situation, this was a frustrating point. Um, my my view is they should have adopted something to enhance. So let's be really clear. They've got a data warehouse, they use Tableau as their system. This was an additional capability to leverage Tableau that they should have put in place.
And without having that additional ability, all the data is sitting there, but you can't analyse it for fraud. You can't extract the fraud fraudulent applications out.
Well, I think we need to.
Like having a supermarket, but you can't buy anything.
We need to separate a couple of things. So there's the process of reviewing applications and assessing them versus what would I would call an enterprise fraud SaaS model that might be doing it automatically, right? So let's separate those two things. Um, we're talking about the manual, if you like, human assessment using a tool like the the network analysis tool. Okay, so they're very different, just for for clarity. Um, but there's no reason why they shouldn't have been looking at enhancing the assessment process by individuals using a tool like that.
Well, we had in answers to qu- from questions from notice, sorry, in answers to questions on notice, the Service New South Wales has responded by saying they've got more data visualisation in Tableau and they're using that together with Excel spreadsheets um as their fraud control measures, fraud identification measures. Um, it seems like we're back to the starting point in terms of identifying fraud within Service New South Wales, if that's the case, still using Excel spreadsheets.
Well, I mean, I I don't have any visibility to what they're doing day to day now.
Yeah. If they were still using Excel spreadsheets as one of their principal fraud identification measures, despite all the advice they've had from you, despite the experience, how would you describe that as a fraud identification um system?
So I think to be clear, that there's there's nothing to say you couldn't use Excel in some shape or form, but I think the the point to this discussion is what was the reason why they didn't decide to enhance their assessment process with something like this? And and I can't answer why they didn't. The only knowledge I have from emails and other things is that it went on for many months backwards and forwards around a particular funding. And there was frustration, to be fair, on the DCS side about this not being adopted.
Yeah. So was, I mean, from your observation, it was basically a funding decision, that they weren't willing to put the funds in to identify the fraud?
To the to the email trials that I was privy to, yes, that's correct.
And so the end result is, we really don't know the scale of fraud of these systems unless you put these kinds of investments in.
So I think it's fair to say that if retrospectively, if you went and looked at the data, you may find more correlated IDs.
So the government has made a series of announcements about the scale of the fraud and suggesting it's, you know, four percent of this scheme and ten percent of this game and two percent of this game. If if that's done on the basis of the fraud identification measures that were in place when you left, would you have any comfort that that's identified the real scale of fraud?
I I don't think I can answer that question because I don't know. I mean, I've been, we've been out of that business for, what, nine months now? So I I couldn't comment as to what they're doing day to day and the efficacy of it.
But when you left in February, did they have the systems in place when you took Power BI with you? When, did they have the systems in place in February to identify the scale of fraud in those grants programmes?
All all I can comment on is that they didn't have a network analysis tool to supplement their other processes.
All right. Um, um, Mr Reese in his evidence has um criticised Power BI and said that it's a visualisation tool that in practice wasn't assisting them in identifying individual cases of fraud. Do you have any response to that?
Well, I think it's important to note that we use Power BI because that was a system that our data analysts felt comfortable with. I mean, and I've seen previous evidence, that Power BI or Tableau, they're both data visualisation tools. Um, it's worth noting that Services of Wales did engage an external company uh after we showed them the goods of what we were using uh with the intended purpose of building something into Tableau. Um, it just didn't get it anyway.
Yeah, and and by that stage, it's seven months into your or eight months into your contract and they still hadn't stacked up Tableau to do the work.
Correct.
That must have been very frustrating for you, Mr Murphy?
Yeah, it was frustrating. But, you know, our jobs to go in and help people and they're not easy tasks. Um, that's why we do what we do. Um, you just have to do your best efforts when you can. And sure, there's always frustrating things. That's part of being a professional, that you just deal with it.
You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it identify the fraud.
Well, any of us that have children, I'm sure would know the same thing, right? You can do your best efforts, but you can't control everything.
But normally you wouldn't compare an organisation, a a large state government organisation with children and, you know, refusing to take advice.
I wasn't making that comparison.
You could actually use party members as another example.
Well, just to be clear for the record.
Or truculent committee members.
I wasn't comparing Services of Wales to children.
I think that was understood.
Um, I I except it was a broad analogy. And I wasn't comparing them to a horse either. Um, but the um, but but I suppose I I comes back to this point. Um, would it be fair to say that there wasn't the investment that you thought was needed when you left in February to identify the scale of fraud?
Well, I I'd rather answer the question in relation to the topic we're talking about, which is the network analysis tool, because I don't think that statement would be fair.
All right. In in terms of your expertise, which is network analysis crunching the data to identify the scale of fraud using that data mining, there wasn't the investment in place and there weren't the resources in place when you left in February to do that job properly?
Uh, that statement is not true. They will continue to invest in the internal team. They will continue to add resources and hire people and hire capability. Um, so that's not a true statement. I think my view back on this topic around the network tool is, and all I can say is they didn't adopt our recommendation, they didn't have it live at all, and when we left in February, it didn't exist. And in my personal opinion, or professional opinion, I didn't see a good reason why I couldn't.
Mr Graham?
Uh, I think I've concluded my um questions, yeah.
Mr Hughes-Hoss? Government?
No, I think I think I'm just dandy. Thanks.
All right. Um, Mr Murphy, Mr Bone, and I think you took um perhaps one or two questions on notice. The secretariat will assist you, um, will assist you with identifying those questions
Sure.
and um providing a timeframe for response. I note that we've said twenty-one days, um which takes us to when?
Pretty much New Year's.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, we 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 may well separately resolve to have a date somewhere in mid-January. And we'll give you clarification of that. I think it's unfair to plonk it down on one, 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 one January.
That that is appreciated.
My assumption is we'll have a discussion after you leave and we'll find a date sometime in mid-January at least to provide those answers. Um, so thank you, A, for your assistance to the people of New South Wales in your contract, your initial five-day contract, which became lengthier and more interesting, and B, for your assistance today. We've really appreciated it.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks.
Thank you.